First thing on the agenda is, I mean, your drive-ins. Now, start off with...
A stamp in or...
Yeah. Before we start, you know, just did you see that Julie responded to?
I did.
You got a copy?
Yeah, I just saw the copy of the response. Right now, I think we just all got it, actually.
Yeah.
So, there are several things that we don't know. The board hasn't seen it, we just got it at 5:30. So, I don't know how we're going to address those matters.
Unless Julie wants to go over them, you know, and have a conversation about it, but like you do with most people, you probably want to get something in writing to respond to the comments.
Okay.
John, can I present the project first?
Sure. Go ahead. You want to go ahead and talk about what you've done and what changes are there?
Sure. Okay, great. So, last year, when we had the approval for the drive-in, we had our heads set on building a temporary screen and having temporary restrooms. Those are, I think, the two major topics for a conversation tonight. And so, when we were building, when we planned out building the screen, the screen being temporary implied a lot of logistical issues in terms of how the screen is going to be, how the quality of the picture, and the fact that it would be distorted from the wind, and also the fact that picking it up and putting it down is very, very labor-intensive. So, being able to figure that out proved that it's almost impossible to have a sustainable drive-in with that kind of screen. And so, we opted to build out a permanent structure that went from 50 by 40 to 56 by 31. And we have, so we built out all the support and all the, and the screen as a permanent structure. And, you know, to date, we haven't had any issues with any of the visibility from the road, and that's been there since last year. So, we made that change. And then, the restrooms, we had customers complaining just about the quality of the restrooms and the way that they were looking, it just kind of just, it didn't feel right, it didn't fit right. So, we had the health department come out and take a look at the existing septic system. And there was determined then that we can actually tap into, build the restrooms out where the drive-in is and tap into the existing septic system because the design was overdesigned. And so, that's what we did. We have one restroom per male and female. And I believe that was the two main points. We can then take it over to Julie here.
So, my memo basically went through the differences between what was approved on the site plan last year, back in June-July, and what's currently shown, and then the revised EAF and some of the photos that were submitted. And I just went through and highlighted any of the changes between what was approved and what's actually out there. So, it's my understanding that what's in the revised site plan is basically an as-built condition of what's currently out there.
Yes.
So, all of those things will have to be approved. The main issues are the retractable screen. The screen was a big issue as part of the previous review in terms of visibility and having the retractable screen was a big item as mitigation. So, since that's no longer there, that'll have to be addressed. And then, the information that's been submitted on having the permanent bathrooms doesn't line up with what's on the revised site plan. And I understand that the revised site plan that was submitted is from October of 2013, but all the information that you've been providing on the permanent bathrooms, that'll have to show up on the site plan.
The revised site plan that you have should be from January.
The one that I have is from...
From October?
It's the revision date on the drawing itself. It's October.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we have an updated revised site plan. I saw some comments, I just saw this, by the way.
Yeah.
So, I saw some comments indicating that it was, the screen wasn't updated on the site plan as well. I think you made a comment on that.
No.
The screen size, the change in screen size, and that it was permanent, wasn't on the site plan.
Right. The, it was in the EAF, in the revised EAF, it still has the sign, the sizing for the previously proposed retractable screen instead of what's currently there. It's just something that needs to be revised.
Okay.
So...
I'll double-check that.
Yeah. So, what I would like to see happen is, go back to your engineers, make sure everything that's in the new sanitary reports and information that you've been submitting is fully reflected on the site plans. In one of the letters, in the letter report, it seemed to describe that there's two septic systems, because it said the one septic system takes sewage from the restaurant's bathrooms. So, then where does the kitchen wastewater goes?
There's a whole separate system built out for the kitchen and all the grease traps and all that kind of stuff.
Right. Because the site plan that's been submitted only shows one septic system.
I think it shows just because it's only applied to the drive-in. So, you want the entire restaurant system?
Well, it should be shown what's going on, because in the letter report, it describes the septic system being underneath the drive-in parking lot, where what's in the site plan doesn't show that, doesn't show where, doesn't show that the septic system is underneath the parking lot. So, you'll just have to make sure that all of the information matches between what's in the letters and the sketches and what's in the actual site plan.
Okay. For, in terms of the septic right now, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, some of the other things, the approved sign along Route 22, it's in a different location, and it's a different shape than what was previously approved.
Yeah, it's actually a lot smaller in this circumstance.
Right. And it's not lit where it was approved to be lit, so that's an improvement.
Exactly. So, it's not lit, yeah.
The number of parking spaces went down.
Yep.
But just all of these things have to be accounted for, because they don't match what was approved previously. One of the other items was before, it was a loop gravel drive, so you could drive in a circle around the parking spaces. Now, it's more like a U-shape, like a horseshoe.
Yeah, it's U-shaped like a horseshoe. We didn't want anybody driving in front of the screen, so there's a drop zone.
Mm-hmm.
In this case, it's what, 60 feet, almost where the screen is.
Has the fire department been to see it?
Yes, they have.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, if you could get a letter from them, because...
We have a letter from them from last year.
For, the letters that I have are for the loop. They were okay with the loop and for providing traffic control.
Okay. There's still access to the front of the screen, and it just doesn't have the gravel pathway.
Right.
So...
But just to make sure that they're, they've seen it and they're still okay with it.
Okay.
Just to, you know, tie up all the loose ends. And then, the, there's now two, two separate sheds for the projector booth and the ticket booth instead of just one combined shed. The color scheme's a little bit different than what was initially proposed, all things like that. So, I just think that the drawings have to be updated. Planning Board needs to be aware of what those changes are. If they're okay with the changes, then we can move ahead.
I believe this is the drawing that you got, and it does depict the projection booth and the ticket booth being separate?
Yes, yes. But it's different than what was originally approved. So, it just needs to be included in the, the planning board needs to be aware of that change to go for amended site plan. So, I'm just trying to point out all of the differences.
Okay.
What's the date in the lower right-hand corner of that drawing?
In the right-hand corner, it's February 15, 2013.
Look above that a little bit.
In the little boxes?
Last revised.
Last revised.
The latest one would be 10/2/13.
Right. So, that's the one that I have.
On this drawing, and it does show everything that we have right now as well. So, this is the latest copy.
Right. It shows this existing septic?
Yes.
Is there another existing septic?
So, the existing septic, this is for the wastewater?
Yeah.
In the kitchen? Grease traps and all that kind of stuff? And then, here's the patio?
Yeah.
Septic goes out here as well.
Right. So, that needs to show up.
Okay.
Because that's where you're going to tie in the bathrooms?
Yes. And the engineer, well, there's another drawing that the engineer had submitted, I believe it's. Showing it. Here's some pictures, but...
Yeah. But it doesn't quite match up with what's shown on the site plan.
Okay.
So, you just need to get that information coordinated.
All right. So, most of it's just a matter of updating the survey that was submitted, or the site plan that was submitted, and should be pretty much, you know, a quick fix. Are you staying in the plan?
Right. So, you'll have to consult with your planning board attorney to determine if the changes to the visibility and to the noise, there's now exterior speakers, where previously there weren't any exterior speakers, if that is significant enough to reopen SEACR and go through that process or not.
Hey?
Well, you've got, because this is an amended approval, you've got to go through SEACR anyway. So, you have to evaluate what the potential environmental impacts are of those project changes, in terms of whether or not they're, excuse me, significant or not.
So, I think we would have to wait until the next meeting. Do you have any kind of review or...
I mean, what I would suggest is that you give everybody a chance to review this memo. You ask the applicant to submit the updated plans, and that have the applicant's engineer respond to Julie's letter and come back to the next meeting. Hopefully, they can do that in two weeks. Come back to the next meeting, have a discussion, and then if it looks like it's straightforward, you can set it for a public hearing.
May July you got the approval to?
We have until August.
August. So, you've got some time. Sure should be enough time to take care of this.
Yeah, we'll start with that. I mean, in terms of, just a question to the board. From what you see here, what, do you foresee any major issues with what we have? You know, we'll make the updates, right? Aside from that, do you foresee right now any possible issues with what we have?
And that's all purpose of the SEACR, is kind of determining whether they're really concerned or not.
Well, I think from what Julie's saying, seems to me that there's probably two critical issues that you'd have to focus in on. One is the size of the screen, which is no longer retractable, it's now there, and does that create a visual impact by itself during leaf-on and leaf-off? And then, you've got speakers now around the building, how loud are they going to be? You know, if they're soft, maybe it's not an issue. If they're louder, I don't know if that's a concern with anybody who might live nearby, but those are the things you've got to think about and determine whether you think they're issues or not.
And what do you have for volume of speakers?
It's minimal. It's just, if you're in the area, if you're walking on the gravel path and you're walking towards the building, you can begin to hear it. It's very, very minimal. And if it is ever an issue, I mean, we don't have a problem ripping the speakers out and just leaving it as it is. If that's, you know, we don't want to hold ourselves up on such a small issue. But the good thing that I can say here is that, you know, we've had, we've made these amendments, and we've operated under these conditions, and right now, we've never had a single issue, leaf-off, leaf-on, traffic on our peak times as well, we've handled everything. And the restrooms are operating right now, and everything is under control. Garbage in terms of water, in terms of noise and visibility from the road. You know, we've all seen it there all winter long and now in the summer. So, it's good that it's there and that you can see it and, you know, make your judgment on that.
Has anybody seen any, determined or...
The speakers are for the outside dining area, then? Is that, you know, where the patio area, is that where...
So, for the restaurant, we do have outdoor speakers, that's just for the patio.
Uh-huh.
And then, on the building for the projection booth, we have four outdoor speakers. If people decide to sit outside of their cars, it kind of helps a little bit with, you know, being able to hear better. So, that's really the purpose. Yeah.
Not beyond the questions of making the two consistent, which I think we have to see next time.
All right. Thank you.
Now, we have the folks from Silo. Your show. Well, just, I'll start off with, where you folks at as far as the rest of the metals and the water and so forth? Where are you at for that?
Good evening, everyone.
Can you state your name for the press, please?
Amanda De Chazade from VHB for Silo Ridge. We've received the numerous memos with comments, and we're in the process of addressing them. We foresee, I would say, within the next week, we would like to get those into the town for your review. But what we would like to move forward with is actually having meetings with the town consultants. We have one scheduled for Monday. I think some of you have seen the email. Dr. Clemens will meet with us to address specific items that he had, and he's asked Mary Ann Johnson to join as well. We also request if a board member can be present, if possible, Monday at 2:00 PM at the Silo Ridge office.
I can be.
I could.
Anybody else want to?
I could be.
I might be able to, and I'd like to.
Julie, we would like to know if you're available, and you don't have to tell me right now, but if you can think of one day next week that we can sit through your comments as well. David, a day next week, if you're available, to review your comments.
Do you want to meet, or do you want me to just do it by phone?
I think it's helpful to... I think it's helpful to sit down and actually be able to go through, we'd like to go through item by item. We want to make sure that our response to your comment is what you're expecting and something that's going to minimize the review, the next review period.
Yeah, it's fine. I mean, if you want to meet, I'm happy to meet. If you could do it by phone, it's only going to be 15, 20 minutes, that'll save you guys a bit.
I don't think, you have 171 comments, I don't think it'll be 15 minutes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yes, there are many that are, we're complying or agreeing with, but...
So, when you want to do that, next week sometimes, if that's your preference?
Yes.
Okay. So, you want me to send you some times?
That would be great.
Okay.
All right. So, you're going to try to schedule a meeting with the Leach consultants, secondly?
Yes.
All right.
In order, so that when we resubmit everything, the plans, all the supporting documentation, the responses, there's been additional communication so that it's agreed upon, the manner in which we're responding makes sense and is going to move the process forward quicker.
All right. Can you folks coordinate with the reset to make sure that we have planning board members go to those meetings or...
Absolutely. Visual analysis is... You don't want me to speak about visual analysis.
Hello.
Say your name, please.
Pedro Torres.
Thank you.
Silo Ridge. Thank you very much. So, there's a couple of comments that we needed, the guidance from the planning board. One of them is with regards to the visual analysis. We have received comments from George James, and there's one particular comment that we feel is not necessarily, is something that we did in the past because we didn't have enough information to generate proper, the proper visuals. And what it entails is essentially develop the visuals to have no landscaping and essentially just shows grading and houses. We actually ended up doing that in the past in order to properly determine where the location of the buildings were, because we didn't have a full 3D model nor the information for the landscaping. That's something that we have nowadays. We have presented the board with a draft of the visual analysis. We're doing some updates with regards to all the comments from George James. But we feel that providing, doing a whole unmitigated version of the pictures, it is just a waste of effort and resources on everybody's, for everyone.
And my understanding, lots of legalities, technical issues required, and I thought I could go on a break, but you stay in direct with the board.
Well, I guess my recommendation on this issue would be, is that you should hear from George on this point, and we should probably have a discussion maybe in two weeks with George and Pedro, both present, so you can understand, you know, what George's position is. Because I think he has some strong opinions on this, which you should factor into your decision. I think what you were talking about, Norm, was the fact that the last, your SEACR findings require photo simulations of the unmitigated condition, and Pedro's saying that, you know, he prefers not to do that at this point. So, whilst in your SEACR findings, you know, you are changing your SEACR findings. So, you know, you could certainly change that if you so deem it necessary. But you should have George present to have that conversation.
And I would be willing to have him, or do the consultation work.
And again, I want to make sure that the board is fully aware that we're not trying not to do work. We're more than happy, and I think we've shown along the way, that we want to make sure we do all the right things. But again, it's a completely unnecessary step. It's like asking you, how do you look with the suit, but then, send me a picture, you know, with a regular shirt. This is not what we're building. So, that's the only reason why we, you know, we would like to hear the board's opinion and it's so we know which way to go forward for that.
Does everybody understand what's being discussed, the impacts?
I don't know all the details, but, you know, from what I do know, you know, like you're saying, if that's not what's going to be proposed, and, or I mean, if that's not what's going to be built...
He's saying the worst-case scenario, is that what he's saying?
No, not worst-case.
Not even that?
Let me explain a little bit what happened. I think this might be...
Well, you showed us last meeting with the visual. Didn't you show us some?
No. So, let me, so what we ended up doing was, in the past SEACR process, we didn't have site plan detailed drawings. So, for us to create what the landscaping was going to be, it was pretty hard. And also, locate where the buildings exactly were going to be on a photograph, it was pretty hard. So, one step that we did in order to ensure that the buildings were going to be where they were is we took essentially a, the picture, we uploaded all the buildings with no vegetation whatsoever, including the existing ones. So, you can actually position the buildings in the right location. And then, that was what was called unmitigated.
And no color on the building, yeah?
Correct. And then, what we ended up doing was, we added the plants, and we added color to the pictures, and that was your visual. Now, we have full landscaping design. So, the visual consultant's able to do a 3D rendering of those plans in winter conditions. We also have full grading plans, we have full architectural design plans, so you have actual buildings. So, what he's asking us is to now, we provided those, and he has some comments, he wants us to do it in photo papers, he wants us to put a whole explanation into it, he wants us to put key plans, which I think ultimately will help the town and the public understand what the visuals, how they were created. But what he wants us to do now is take all of those pictures, redo them again with no landscaping, no color, not existing vegetation. So, it's like, well, yeah, we can definitely do it, is...
But that's not going to be your plan, anyway.
First of all, it creates confusion, in my opinion. It's now someone's looking at something that is not there, that's not what we're building. And second, it's an unnecessary expense and unnecessary use of resources for both the town to review it, the public to review it, it's just, and that's why, you know, we were asking, you know, to, for the planning board to consider maybe not having to do those.
What, yeah, would it benefit to have them? I don't...
I can explain why George thinks that. I mean, I'm not advocating for his position, but I think what he's saying is that they propose mitigation, and if you have simulations in the unmitigated condition, you can compare the mitigation that's being proposed to see whether or not it is adequate, whether or not additional mitigation should be provided. And the only way that you can really do that is to see what it looks like without the mitigation and then with the mitigation. And you can compare them and say, well, gee, maybe we need some more trees here, you know, that sort of a thing. I think that's what he's saying. But I'm just summarizing it, and that's why I think you should hear from him, because he's got a number of, you know, views on this, and he's your technical consultant on visuals.
Yeah, no, I think we should wait and hear his position, but it's actually the opposite. The only thing actually gives us, if you want to take some of the mitigation away, if you want to reduce screening.
Right. If you want to reduce, you're going to say...
And there's only one portion where we're putting screening that affects two pictures. Now, we have to do seven view shots, which each one of them has four pictures in there. So, this is a substantial amount of time, you know, substantial amount of paperwork that ultimately, you know, I don't think it provides the, it provides any value to the public. But, you know, I think we should wait and discuss with George, and also, we would like to hear what the planning board has to say on those.
Yeah, ultimately, down, or the next few weeks, I mean, the issues that these folks are not wanting to address and those the consultants have recommended, you know, that part's going to get filtered out, we're going to be left with those issues, and that's what the planning board's going to have to rule on for the most part, the most difficult part of the process. And that, and by meetings we'll be talking about in a while, and other matters will be some of those issues.
Yeah, we have, so that's one point. The other point we had is, is a similar point. The MDP in the previous plan called for, in certain areas, to preferably use native plants that were locally sourced. While we agree that not to use invasive species, we agree to use native plants, but not to say native to the Harlem Valley is just, it becomes, it diminishes the amount of plants that we can use. It is harsh to source them. We have a substantial amount of plants being planted here, and we feel, we feel it's not necessary. Many of the plants that exist here currently are not native. The town actually happens to, they just got a very generous donation to do the landscaping, it looks unbelievable. The vast majority of those plants are not native. And I'm not advocating against it, I actually like what was done here. But those are some of the things that are very impracticable that we're being asked.
I think the key would be non-invasive, you know?
We agree, we went above non-invasive.
Yeah.
We went above non-invasive. I think we have a commitment to, you know, being extremely environmentally friendly, and that's why we said native, and we're, you know, native to the Northeast. But to try to say only native to the Harlem Valley, you know, it becomes extremely impracticable to really source that kind of, the kind of volume of plants and type of plants we're putting here.
What's the number of plants?
Correct.
It may not even be possible.
I think native would be New England native, you know? And yet, non-invasive would be important.
Do you know whether Michael Clemens has looked at these issues? Do you have any comments on this? I mean, that's the issue that he would be dealing with.
Well, that's what he's, that's what he's suggesting, that's one of his recommendations.
Is that local, you know... I see.
His reports, as he's writing it.
So, you know, we comply with all the things. His only thing is that we didn't, you know, we were, I think we have a concern, is the local source.
There are a lot of concerns, I mean, in his report, but just in terms of informationally, it would be a mistake to say that's the only thing. But also, I think it's important to clarify between, the first thing, which you're saying, informationally, George has asked for certain things, and you think as a matter of procedure, that information isn't necessary for us. And the second thing, which is someone's recommendation, that you're disagreeing with as a matter of policy.
Correct.
Completely different kind of question.
Correct. Yeah. And, you know, we, what I meant with Dr. Clemens, Dr. Clemens did have other comments. We can easily address those comments, and we're working with them to address, and the results are fine. This is a comment that we have a concern, because we don't think we can practically actually do it on the field.
So, I think on this one, I mean, I would recommend that you hear from Dr. Clemens on it, you know, to get his viewpoints, and then you guys have both sides, and he can make your decision.
And we plan to bring this up during Monday's meeting with him.
Okay. That's great.
Now, the meetings you're going to be holding with the consultants, how do you want to package that so that the other board members become aware, if anybody's up to, whoever's present, bring that back to the board, or as far as...
First of all, we're going to be presenting the board with all of our comments. I think our focus is going to be to discuss those comments with the consultants, see if we can find closure to all of them, which ultimately then will be... see if we can find closure to all of them, which ultimately then will be presented to the board for their review. To the extent that we can find closure to some of his comments, I think those are the comments that I guess we're going to be discussing with the board and with the consultant to try to figure out how we get closure with them.
You're going to be giving responses to all the comments after your meeting with the consultants?
And we're presenting it in a tabular format, just because of the number of them and the clarity. So maybe the best approach is an additional comment, you know, like a comment column that whether it's something that Julie doesn't agree with, and it's her comment to our response. So you've already had some insight as to what we discussed.
One other comment that, it is just, we want to understand a little bit how the planning board wants to review this, and it's a concern we have, not just with us, but with a lot of different applicants. It is our understanding that Armenia's not an MS4 community, and as such, they rely, ultimately permitting comes from the E.C., the Health Department, and all the other agencies. While I think it is wise for Armenia to review a lot of these items, I think, you know, we're seeing it not just with us, but with a lot of other applicants. The amount of comments and details that are going into other agencies' review process is becoming extremely cost prohibitive. And I'm a little bit concerned of how we're moving forward from here, and how it's actually affecting a lot of different applicants here.
And not just that one item, it's, you know, it's anything that goes through the D.C., the DOH, the State Health Department, the DOT, so it's the multiple agency reviews. If we're required to get a permit from an agency, they're reviewing the package. Where does it leave the town consultants? I guess it's just clarity of what is their process and, you know, what level of review are they providing to you if we're, you know, presenting it and providing it to an agency, and they have to give us the permit.
Most of those are going to involve you doing it, correct?
It's up to me. Basically, we want to know what's going to the other agencies, so then we have a full picture of what's going on, and we can, you know, compare the information that we get for what we're reviewing, and then see what's being, what those other agencies are getting to review, just to make sure that there's no holes or that sort of thing. We're not going to, you know, contradict or undermine another agency's approval, but just to make sure that we have the whole picture. Because typically, the other, you know, state agencies or county agencies, they're pretty narrow, you know, with what they review. Where, being the town, we want to make sure that everything is looked at as a whole picture.
Correct, and we are in 100% agreement that that should happen. Our concern is, is going overboard, where we're getting too conflicting comments sometimes. And I've seen it with a couple, you know, we've reviewed all the applications, and I've seen that happen. And we were concerned with a lot of the comments that we received, where they might be technical in nature, I think, or making the documents a lot more convoluted sometimes by having to reference and bring language from other documents into the same application, into the same application. So it's just, we've just got to figure out, you know, to what extent we're having to review things twice with two different engineers.
I'm sorry if that's difficult for you, but what are you proposing? Are you suggesting a re-order, where we eliminate some positions?
No, no, not completely, no, not, I actually agree with what Julie mentioned. However, for a perfect example, we received over 10 pages of comments with, you know, things that were already approved by the E.C.
So they're just doing their job too well.
No, not, I guess.
Well, now, you know what?
You can explain it better.
There are some items that, it's just a matter of adding language into a report, but the report references a manual, so it's just cutting and pasting sections of a manual that we're already referencing. Other details, maybe a practice in, a stormwater management practice in one respect, the additional material that's provided. At the end of the day, when we look at the final result, the design didn't change, the water quality volume didn't change, but it's just a preference of this is the way it should be shown. There were absolutely legitimate comments, I'm not trying to say there aren't.
So what's your proposal for a different approach?
I think the SWIP is probably the worst suggestion, because that's one that Julie took a lot of time, and that's one that's probably looked over the least by the D.C., but I think what clients' concern more is, is when we go to the water, the water supply system, the sanitary system, the wells, we didn't submit that because previously it wasn't required. John, the building inspector, knows everything that's going on, and he didn't require the submission of the well. That will get packaged once we have the well report, everything's complete. We're planning on giving a complete package instead of piecemealing everything.
So, again, what is it that you would like to change about the process?
For a complete package, every letter from the town goes through some different people.
Correct, and we're fine to submit those letters to the town, so the town's aware of it. What we're trying to avoid is having two different engineers review the same letter as we're going through the process prior to having the final engineering, because then you get, everybody designs things a little bit different.
So, from my point of view, this is my point of view, you're proposing something. So, say I make a comment about it, and then the response is, well, it's already been approved by such and such an agency. If I don't have that letter, drawing, report, I can't follow that up. So now, if I, you know, if you want to put together a whole package, which I can understand where that's coming from, so you wait until you get all those other approvals, and then you submit that information, and then for whatever reason, whatever it was I was referring to isn't included in that, then we could have addressed it a month ago. Now I'm going to bring it up again.
Correct, yeah.
So that, you know, that's why.
I think the comment is not making sure that we have the information in there. I think that, you know, that's correct.
It's the double review.
And not even the double reviews, everybody can design something different, right? So an engineer looks at bridge, and one guy wants to do pre-span, the other guy wants to do concrete pilings. So now you have two different engineers, or actually three, because you have the engineer who's designing it, the engineer who's reviewing it, and the engineer for the agency who's reviewing it, who's ultimately the authority here. And you're having three different ideas, and it makes the process a lot harder to get to the end. So, that's what I was getting, it's more of the design, not so much make sure that the information's there on several of those items.
But.
When you say, I'm sorry, when you say they're the authority, I mean, to a certain degree, the planning board has some authority in this area.
Given that the town of Armenia's not an MS4, the liability for review and also implementation of the stormwater management base, the stormwater management plan speeds relies on the D.C. They're the enforcement agency, they're the ones who come do all the reviews every twice a week, and so forth. So if the D.C. wants to do something with it, we have to comply with that.
Yeah, but we're the lead seeker agency, and we can be sued. So we need to be, we have responsibility as well as authority.
Correct, and we're not saying not to be involved. What we're asking is maybe not to have.
Yeah, fair, fair enough. I think the ask the question's okay. I think he's asking, if you've got your service being provided, can you guys take a look at whether it's being duplicated in the review process? That's a fair question to ask, we can look at it. Can we do anything about it? I can't say at this point, but can we look at it? Sure.
And we're not saying don't review stuff, because we don't expect the town, the town and the planning board not to review this. We actually expect you guys to review it. We're just, our comment was, we think it's being overly excessive, can you guys look at it? That's all we're, all we're asking. We're not saying don't do it, because I think you guys should do it, because you have, you have the thing.
And we addressed 99% of your SWIP comments, by the way, Julie, just so you know.
But you also have to keep in mind that I, I don't know what you've submitted to other agencies and what other agencies are reviewing.
We're glad, I think.
But we haven't submitted.
No, but we're okay providing all of the documentation all the time. We're agreeing with that. The town should know what we're submitting. And you should be aware of what we submitted, what has been submitted. Some of the ones that we didn't submit to you, for example, the Health Department, we did the same report in 2005, it was never required. That's the only reason why. The final report was given to the town for the review.
Okay.
But, you know.
The well locations, you're not reviewing the sighting of the wells. You know, that interim process, it's been the back and forth, and it's been a four-month process with the Department of Health, you know, the County Department of Health. So we didn't send you everything because we were still working with them. Now that we have the approval, that's not an issue to send. But it was all that interim pieces, I think, is what you're trying to say.
No, and I think we can provide them all the stuff.
At the end, but it's that in between, back and forth. Because we're going to work with the department, specifically the water. I mean, that's probably the most concern. But we're working with the department to get the wells sighted, they've now been sighted, they're now drilled. We have approvals for.
To drill, but still, then we have to now submit it to you for the review.
Right, and I wanted to do the Health Department's review, but I wanted to know what they're looking at, so then I know that that's what they're looking at.
Correct, so what, you know, now we're going to submit you all the paperwork, and you're going to see the history of what happened with that, or how we got there.
Okay.
So you have a history when you look at the report, you know how they got there.
I mean.
Okay, that's good.
The planning board has the legal authority under the subdivision regulations in the site that to look at water and sewer and stormwater and all those things, just a matter of degree, if that's what your issue is.
Correct, yeah.
And I don't see any reason why that can't be worked out. I mean, typically, the planning board's consultants are not undertaking a detailed review that would be done by the agencies, but they still have to look at that information, because the planning board still has jurisdiction over those areas, and they need to look at, she needs to look at the water and sewer and, you know, those kinds of things.
Correct, we're just, I think the degree is what we're trying to.
The degree, yeah, that's fair.
I think a big point to try to help on the individual meetings we have, we'll go over some of that stuff and see what might have been an issue, or what could have been done differently.
Correct.
We'll go from there.
I'm not the water engineer, by the way, just so you know.
Then the last.
So, the bond.
The last question we have is a bond. We submitted in, a week ago, two weeks ago, we submitted an estimate which was prepared by our contractors based on the work we're doing right now. Julie just, Magarillo just gave us.
I think I just got it to her this week.
Yeah, I got it.
It was just this week, because she asked for it.
Julie prepared an estimate. We think the estimate is, I don't know how she got through those numbers, but I think we should hear her. And additionally, too, we've had VHP as well to prepare estimates using the R.S. means, which are also.
Industry standards.
Industry standards, and drastically lower as well, so.
So, the first estimate that we gave Julie did not include the labor costs, it was basically materials. And we didn't disagree with her addition of the labor. So what we did was, we took the RSA that you have, the larger scale, and we just analyzed it based on what we think the unit cost should be, and the quantities remain the same. So when we looked at the, specifically the material section, the erosion blanket and seed and mulch, or the hydro seeding, without having the backup data, I don't know where the unit cost came from, but considering, using the R.S. means book, our numbers were substantially lower. And I think it comes, you know, last meeting we were discussing ballpark numbers that $1,000 an acre to restore was certainly a reasonable number, which our numbers fall into that category. The 196,000 or the 383,000 for 35 acres is quite an enormous number for grassing and, you know, taking down a few hills that are almost all down at this point. They've almost all been leveled. And this was based on considering the largest area of disturbance that would be allowed at any one time. And we understand that Pete requested to be here for this decision.
Yeah, he sent an email asking if he could hold off on making a decision so he could be part of that discussion. And basically, I told him it could be a problem, because.
And just with regard to dollar amount, the seed and mulch is the number that Silo's currently getting from the contractor.
Including labor.
Including labor, and we've given the additional labor on top of that.
Is your labor based on prevailing wage?
Yes.
Is your labor based on prevailing wage or private sector?
Private sector.
Okay, there's a big difference right there, right?
That's a big difference, but not that number.
No, but it's still. No, I know, but it's still, even if you use the R.S. means with the, with.
Well, we included the city index cost increase, and we also included contingency and mobilization. So you're comparing 200,000 to 65,388.
Our cost was 38, which was not, included, by the way, this included labor, it got estimates from labor material.
Right.
But he wanted, he didn't include, he was, our number was 38,388.
The original, the original.
What we got from our contractors. That was with, that would be not prevailing wages. The numbers you're using here for the 64,000, that's using the R.S. means, including the multiplier for the city index for the TPC, right?
Yes.
Where's the labor in yours?
It's exactly the same as Julie's.
Where do you have it figured in?
Right in the section, it says equipment and labor. Sorry, it's really small for. I'm sorry, hand it here, I have.
Ours was included labor and materials, we didn't break it down. Just so, so for an example, the biggest number here would be your, your seed and mulch. If you look at the D.C. standards, it requires 20 pounds per acre, and some areas 30 pounds per acre. A 50-pound bag of grass seed, if you buy a crop production, is $19. The cost to seed, to mulch, including labor, equipment, and materials, we're paying currently 400 bucks an acre. So even if you use any means, mobilization, all the other things you would add, how do you go from $450 an acre to $3,920 an acre?
There's got to be a standard for, for acres somewhere.
Yeah, I guess, because we just got this tonight, that they should probably talk amongst themselves, engineer to engineer, to try to figure out, you know, where things are, and Julie's got to take a look at it.
I thought they had.
No, we just received it before.
Julie, I just had Julie ours earlier.
You guys had to talk that before.
She reviewed it, and we received hers tonight, and just so that we understood, we were able to present.
I just think they should try to work it out amongst themselves, or come to some, you know, more of a reasonable solution, and then that'll give Peter an opportunity to be present. And if possible, it'd be best to have this material sort of before planning board meetings, so the board has an opportunity to take a look at it, as opposed to.
Well, again, you're going to be before, you're going to do individual meeting before next planning board meeting.
Sure.
Just to put it in perspective, when we spoke here last week, we spoke about that the number required for a mining site would be higher than what we're doing. This number here is very similar number to what was required for the mining operations in Armenia, above, actually.
It'd be good to have a different tag on Pete, be one of the people attending meetings if you couldn't do this one. Would you make sense?
So, can I assume, based upon our discussions tonight, that you are amenable to providing a bond? It's just a question of what the cost will be besides the bond?
We wouldn't put a bond here, we just put, we will put the cost on a bank account for the, for the.
Post cash.
Yeah.
What you're saying, okay.
And it will be, this will be for the reclamation of the workforce. We feel this is completely unnecessary, we feel that it wasn't required in the seeker. We've been a great neighbor of this town, we've always done the right thing, but if there's something that the board really thinks that we need to do, then I guess we'll have to do it.
Right, we don't change our response to last meeting, we just, this was the backup information we requested to provide. I don't think there was a decision either way, if the board felt that it was a necessary requirement.
No, that's what Pete had basically asked us to hold off on, if I could. I mean, people can certainly voice their opinions at this point, they want to.
Why you just said it last meeting, I don't think this, I think you shouldn't put up a bond really for that person I said at last meeting, so. Yeah, I don't think you were here as well.
We both agree to that, yeah.
I agree. But whatever, we'll figure it out.
All right, let's wait for Pete, and we'll have a meeting with Julie, and we'll go from there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We just want to discuss process, I guess, like just briefly.
I do want to mention something to the town. With regard to the workforce housing, I know there's been several questions. We have received a recommendation from the town board. We are currently reviewing it, and we're going to be submitting our response back to them probably this week.
Recommended, what kind of recommendation?
They, essentially a recommendation of what the fee and due would be. They have Duchess County planned.
They have Dutchess County Planning Department provide them a memo. We're reviewing the memo and then we're providing them with our position probably next week and we'll make sure we see the planning board as well.
So, you're basically deciding whether or not to pay the fee or build a house, does that take the same?
Yeah, I think two things, one is what the amount of the fee and lieu should be. And two is whether it is a fee and lieu or whether it is, you know, we build our own workforce housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
David, stop me at any point if I'm wrong, because I'm flying without Peter, but we're still optimistic. We think with the meetings next week that we may be able to at least come to conclusions on what the comment response, the responses to comments and how valid they are. And we would still like to resubmit plans and move toward a July public hearing. Right. But I think we really need those meetings in order to determine where the plan has moved. And a lot of the items, there's nothing in the plan that's substantially different from the comments, although they were lengthy, it was more material that needs to be submitted and it's not so much changing the design intent at all of the project.
Yeah, because the planning board's about to have those meetings, because otherwise they're going to go back and forth for months. And it needs to be looked at hard and looked at while you're remembering what occurred a few weeks back instead of a few months back, so you can make a better decision on it.
And we will get a preliminary subdivision plot in for your review. It will just take a little bit of time. Not a sketch plot, but a preliminary subdivision plot.
Just want to make sure you guys are all squared away so you can file it and not have any issues.
Yes, yes.
Dave, short of the kind of.
Oh, I'm sorry. And just to clarify, we are not pursuing the temporary tent plan. So even though there were beautiful plans, we're not going ahead with that. We will not be doing anything in that area at this time.
Why not?
It's not economically feasible to build that, we're going to utilize the existing office.
Dave, short of the resolution on the outstanding comments, is there anything to be done, going forward?
No, but you're going to have to do something, we're going to have to make some referrals to the planning board, a referral to county, you know, those kinds of things, you have to. But you can't do that until you get consensus on these comments and you get the plans and to a point where they're basically final, you've got an agreement with the town's consultants and the applicant's consultants. So I think we'll know much better once these meetings are concluded within a week or two, you know, what the timeframe is going to be. If you can shoot for something in July, it's good to have something penciled in. Until you have the meetings and you know where the plans are, you won't really know. We can't put a finer point on that schedule.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
We've got a couple of things, any other notice?
It was just the approval of things that, right?
Close it.
And I was thinking about things, um, we tend to, we're discussing the extra, you know.
Okay, well, that's me, you guys kind of, you know, that's what I'm doing right now.
The approval of things I gave up last meeting, here, everybody's like, have these a lot.
Uh huh, so it's fine, mine, that's good. Make a motion to a, approval now. I'll make your motion, second half.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, I think essentially it's going to be reviewed by the town board or it's approved by the town board on the last meeting, right? And last I'd seen, it was going to be, if you missed, I don't know if you have a total rate meetings during the course of the year?
Eight meetings during the course of the year, I mean, 30 seconds.
Three considered meetings, yeah. That initially, I mean, it's actually just triggers the town, the town board, the ability to look at that person, what's going on, is their validation for it. Same with the training law, correct? Was that passed also?
Well, that has been passed for a while.
That's been passed, yeah, same thing there, yeah, the annual training requirement. Somebody doesn't comply with the annual training requirement, then the town board can take a look at it and see if the issue is, and I know a lot of us, including myself, are coming due this month, so.
There's also some planning zoning, some schools who passed this around, take one and see. Have you reviewed any of those products?
I'm just going to let you know that I talked to Judy Presler, who is the executive director of the New Planning Federation. They conduct training for municipal officials along the state, major planning type stuff. And she said that she'd be happy to come down, or have somebody from the foundation come down, if you guys wanted to put together, you know, a couple towns, you know, like two or three towns. And they'd be happy to come down and give a training, you know, it could be on, you know, basic planning board or basic zoning board or, you know, whatever it is that you want. So I just figured I'd let you know that that opportunity was available to you if you wanted.
Oh, yeah, you could, you could. Can you get the information on the research, far as the contact goes?
Um, yeah, yeah.
It'd be nice to do a bunch of the markups at the same time as far as. Is there anything else for you, Julie? I see there are some folks out in the audience, I don't know if they see, does anybody have any questions? It's not normal to be asking people if they do, but I'll throw it out there. Yes, Tom?
Will there be a chance to review the comments by the consultants, by the public, or are they only?
Come on up to the podium for the hearing.
Hi, I'm just a little bit confused about where we are in the process. So the seeker has been submitted and the comments that you were referring to are comments from the consultants?
Correct.
So will the public and/or interested parties be able to review the comments from the consultants?
Once everything's finalized, yes.
And how would they do that?
How, that's what we were talking about tonight, we're going to be sitting down, reviewing those comments and come on up with determinations, that's how we're going to proceed.
Okay, so, but can they actually see the comments, is what I'm asking?
Yes.
Yes, okay, online, through the planning board secretary?
Right.
Okay, that's one question. And the second question is, written comments by the public and interested parties need to be submitted by when?
There's no date yet. No, there's no date set for that yet.
Pardon?
There's no date set for that.
No date for that, set for that, yeah, okay. And then how long do you anticipate the public hearing will take place for?
I'm not going to guess.
Okay.
It's too complicated of a process.
What, people would be able to read their public comments at that meeting?
It's typically better, if you think you're going to have a comment, to wait and submit it at the public hearing, as part of the public hearing, because, you know, the consultants for the applicant and the town are going through a process now, trying to iron out issues, and so some of your questions and some of your issues may be ironed out. But that's typically why, you know, we wait for the public hearing, because that's when the board makes a determination that the project is ready to be submitted for the public view. So submitting things before that is, you know, premature, could be premature. So it's much better to wait for all the information that you can possibly have.
So, and the public hearing will be by mid-July?
I'm not going to guess, that's what we're shooting for.
Shooting for, okay, okay.
If we can get all the comments ironed out and everything addressed, it'd be nice to be doing. I don't know if it's possible, we're going to try.
A lot of people are on vacation, then.
Well, I'm not going to put it off for three months because it might be.
No, I'm just saying, that's true.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Arlene?
A word of advice about his plans. I would suggest that you do stick with what grows in the area. Because there's a lot of animals around here that are heat up, all the stuff. As from experience, well, you've been in here. Don't be wise about what's here. And don't go by the top of the deck.
I appreciate it.
All right, anybody else have any questions, Tom? Need a motion to a German.
I'll make that motion.
Second half.
All in favor?